Good evening. Welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. It's June the 5th. First order of business is the termination of a quorum. We do have a quorum tonight. Second item is to approve the minutes of the May 15th Planning Commission meeting. Staff, you have any corrections or additions to that?
No, sir.
If not, Vice Chairman and I move it. We approve the minute system. They have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes are approved. First item of business is old business. It's the zoning application for approximately 89.75 acres along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to CH. Mr. Brick Murphy is applicant. I would like to remind the audience that this is not a public hearing tonight. We have had a public hearing. There will be another opportunity at city council level to speak on this matter. We're going to hear from the engineers and the applicants on changes they made, have made, at the direction of the staff and the planning commission and the community. Mr. Alot?
Yes, sir. Just sort of as a recap of where we've been and where we are. During its regular meeting on May 1st, the planning commission did conduct this public hearing on this application. There were quite a number of people present that participated. There's a lot of questions about drainage, traffic, conditions of Haynes Drive, and the need for its improvement. After the public hearing, the planning commission deferred action and wanted to have some more information on drainage and the traffic, et cetera. On May 15th, the planning commission met its regular session. Among the items on that agenda was the staff reports and a presentation from Mr. Bill Huddleston, who is the engineer the city has retained to prepare a drainage program, a drainage study if you will, for the north Murfreesboro area. And he reported to you on that study, its status, and also the next part of his program, which was to design drainage structures and detention areas that would help to drain the area that consistently pulls water north of Haynes Drive, west of Memorial Boulevard, on a big part of the property subject of this application. It was a presentation that staff joined in. We also made explanations. We discussed that this is a project that we have been working towards, independent of a zoning application for this area. That this is water that has what we would consider nuisance to the property owners in the area, the residences with water in their backyards after a extended period, and the mosquito problems that that type of water has. We discussed the ability to move that project forward using the stormwater funding. That's a source of funding that is very well suited for doing that kind of project. We heard how that project would help to set in the stage for additional improvements. While that project would help to alleviate the level of water, that any development wouldn't lower than likely be required to construct additional drainage ditches, drainage pipes, to further drain the property for development purposes. But that the city's ditch would be more of an infrastructure analogous, but not exactly like, the Big Ditch Project, where the city stepped in and constructed the improvements that other people could drain to as they developed their property, but would provide immediate relief to existing residences. The materials that you have before you include a letter from Mr. Brick Murphy with exhibits prepared by his, part of his team. One of the things that had been discussed was to work with the adjacent property owners to talk about the, what they call the notch area. That's the portion of one of the tracts that extends into the Palmer Heights subdivision, where those lots that are adjacent to it have a very shallow backyards. One of the areas of trying to accommodate these property owners would be to simply leave that property zoned RS-15 in what they call the notch. Because it appears that with some amount of studying on the part of the applicant's team, it appears that that area can be used very well as a detention area. And that from a land use standpoint, that type of structure can be constructed, whether it's RS-15 or commercial highway. So that area could be left out. There is a map that shows that area, and I think it shows the area as a yellow area. The second area that they've tried to do is to look for a way to create a transition of uses, recognizing that some of the commercial highway uses are a little bit more impactful potentially to residential uses. So back off to a commercial fringe for a 250-foot strip along the west line of the entire area, represented by the original applicants. That does not include the other property owners, but it just as well could, if that were what the planning commission were to want to recommend. They have also discussed with, and I think they're willing to commit to, the applicants, and this would be independent, something they'd do with recovenants, additional buffering in width and planting heights. I think that's something that they've discussed with the residents. Most of these have been on either on one-on-one meetings or with a couple of property owners at a time, as they've been able to meet with them. Included with your general materials is also an illustration that shows the breakdown from the original request property owners that are shown in orange, and then there is the additional study area that's blue. You'll notice that some of the blue, one of the parcels is owned by Mr. and Ms. Parker, just north of Haynes Drive, and then the remaining property that include Mr. Rogers, his wife, Mr. and Ms. Breeding, the Pattons family, and a couple of other parcels. Since the public hearing, I have received correspondence from Mr. Breeding and his wife is also requesting that their parcels be excluded. They're not against the rezoning. Their circumstances caused them to not be ready for the zoning change and prefer that they keep it zoned residential. But they have alerted me that in the future, as their circumstances change, they may have a desire to be rezoned. On the third of the three maps, you'll see their property is identified with a hatchmark area, and you can see it on the screen. It's almost the north end of it. For your convenience, to help you to understand the difference between commercial highway and commercial fringe, I included an excerpt from the city's zoning ordinance, so that you can see the different uses that are permitted for yourself, if you have any questions there. At this point, the planning staff is here. We're ready to answer your questions. The planning commission needs to deliberate. Certainly, the applicant's team is present to maybe answer additional questions. And if you want to hear them to discuss their letter that is before you, they're here to make that and would be very pleased to do so. As you say, this is not a public hearing, so we would really not really ask that they, we would sort of ask that they not, I guess, ask as much that you approve it as they are to be more of a factual report, which is probably the most appropriate since we've already had a public hearing.
There has been some significant changes in the original application to what they've come up with now, and they're highlighted in this letter. I would like maybe Mr. Murphy to explain some of the changes that you have made and the accommodations that the property owners have made, and I think that's important.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Young. I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy, Murphy, and we represent the applicants. At the public hearing, as mentioned, we heard a number of concerns. Based on those concerns, me and my team reached out to a number of the property owners who have been affected, particularly the notch property owners in particular. I had several meetings with them. I fielded a number of phone calls and emails as well. And based on those concerns, we had some fact-finding sort of meetings. We sat down, wanted to get additional information about their concerns, to make sure we truly understood their concerns as the property owner's representative. In response to these neighbors' concerns, we've amended our application as before you And if you would like, Mr. Randy Caldwell can kind of go through the specifics of that application and the amendment to the application. But basically, the points that are most relevant is the notch property will stay RS-15. We anticipate having a drainage structure there, either a retention or detention pond in that area. Then, 250 feet from the property line adjoining Palmer Heights, we'll have commercial fringe, which we feel like is a less impactful use. It would not allow things like drive-in banks or drive-in fast food restaurants like a McDonald's that has your traditional, I would like to say, Squawk boxes, which are a little bit, you know, obtrusive to the neighbors. So we've had a transitional zoning to soften the application as it interacts with the neighbors, based on their concerns expressed to us. We've also widened the buffering area from the required 15 feet to 20 feet of landscape buffer. The evergreen plantings will be increased from the required 6 feet to 8 feet. So right off the bat, when the project is developed, you'll have an additional 2 feet of evergreen plantings. We feel like that will soften the transition from the residential to the commercial fringe. Additionally, we anticipate having at least a 20-foot-wide drainage feature, a swell. So you're going to have 40 feet of separation there. So you'll have both buffering, evergreen plantings, and you'll have distance, which is one of your best, which is one of your best ways to buffer property is distance. We also have proposed, these weren't really requested by the neighbors, but we think in being responsible applicants and the property owners as being responsible citizens, we're going to put restrictive covenants prohibiting uses that we feel like are not compatible with the neighborhood between, and they'll be recorded between the second and third reading. So these accommodations were based directly on the comments that we heard at the, at the public hearing that was conducted last month, and then based on our one-on-one and small group meetings we had with the affected parties. And our goal in those meetings, once again, was to truly understand their concerns and see if there were ways that we could accommodate those concerns, and I believe our amendment to the application does that. So I would thank you for your consideration.
Any questions from Mr. Halberg?
Mr. Murphy, I have one question for you. When we speak of the 250-foot-wide commercial fringe
Yes, sir.
that is, you know, around the Palmer Heights or the other neighbors, is that in addition to the buffering and easements, or would that, those buffering and easements be part of the 250 feet?
Well, the idea is there would be the drainage feature, the buffering, and then you'd have the, commercial fringe would be all part of the same area. Now, in the notch area, you're going to have residential period, and so you will have buffering there, and we're going to commit to that buffering density in that residential RS-15 area as well. But that's where we feel like the interface between the neighbors is most sensitive, is in that notch property, because our backyards are smaller. And so you'd have the RS-15 in the notch, and then you'd have the additional 250 feet of commercial fringe.
Okay.
So you're, in the notch area, you're getting quite a bit of additional space of what we would feel like are less impactful type uses. Hope that's instructive.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you and I have spoken about this briefly earlier, but in addition to having the restrictive covenants ready to record between second and third readings, you'll have them at least in bullet point format for the council to review when it comes, if the project comes before the council.
I'll be prepared to, during our presentation at council, propose some just basic bullet points of the sorts of uses that we believe should not be on the property. And then some other restrictive covenants dealing with things like building material issues and lighting and some things like that, that we feel like can soften the impact of any potential development to the neighbors. So that's something we're committed to do, and part of our presentation at council will include those. Now, I know that's something that you can't require, but I think that's instructive to the neighbors in terms of what we're willing to do as applicants' representatives, and applicants are willing to do, just as a show of good faith. And those are things that we can say for certain, we're not going to do these things, and for certain, we are going to do these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from Straight Lot, probably, I think. Regarding some of these items that are being offered, for example, 8-foot-tall buffer as opposed to 6-foot-tall buffer, when you have something that is above and beyond the standard zoning requirement or buffering requirement, how do you enforce that as far as, I mean, this is going to be, if, you know, any rezoning on here is going to go through as any, as a standard rezoning straight out of the book. So does just, you just know, and people have to come to the planning department to realize that, or if they're just looking up our standard requirements, they're only going to find the 6-foot, they're not going to know the 8-foot until they come in and talk to you on all of these different little items?
If it's not in the zoning, it's not something we're involved in, if they're restrictive covenants. Of course, restrictive covenants would be recorded at the register's office.
And I don't think these are going to be restrictive covenants. This is just what they're offering.
I was understanding that they were, we're going to make those restrictive covenants. If it wasn't a commercial fringe
Okay, then I just read this, only read the last one as being a restrictive covenant.
Well, I know one thing is that I have no ability to enforce anything beyond the minimum requirements of the zoning. Do not, have not, and never will have that ability.
Mr. Murphy and I traded phone calls for the last two days and didn't get to talk, so I'm so sorry. If you can just clarify for me whether there'll be restrictions on each of these items.
Mrs. Jones, I'm sorry, and you're a very busy person. I'm sorry that
You too, you too.
But anything that's above and beyond the base restrictions, we will, the base requirements for the zoning, we'll put down as restrictive covenant. So that way, they'll run with the land, they'll be enforceable, they'll be something that affects the title to the property, and they truly do have teeth, because they're the things that banks will look at and require as part of financing the property.
Okay, okay.
So anything that's above and beyond your base requirements, we will put in the form of restrictive covenants, recorded before, between the second and third reading, and we'll put those in bullet point format and present those at council level.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's my last question.
Any other questions? I have one question, Mr. Alot. One of the first things that we wanted to do with this, whether the zoning is passed or not, is to remove the water from the back ends of the houses along Morgan Road and in Palmer Heights. With the inclusion of the several different property owners, this is now a possibility, and I want to say an surety. Is that a correct statement?
Well, no, it's not, but it is a, it's very positive to the program. The property owners have indicated a willingness, and they've repeatedly made this public representation, that they'll give us whatever easements we need, generally as it's been described to them, along their real property lines, and that's the applicants. But there are other property owners that will have to be considered as well, that are not part of that application or the property, project. Also, the city council will have to approve the funding for it. So there are some steps along the way that have yet to be met. We've got to make sure that the council is willing to fund the project, and then we'll have to acquire the right-of-way easements necessary that are beyond the scope of these property owners to provide. I do fully intend to, if this moves forward, to make sure that these property owners do give us the easements. I have every belief that they will. But we can't make that a condition of their zoning. That would be contract zoning, conditional zoning. It won't fly in Tennessee. But I do think they have a reason beyond just the zoning, and that is the development of property. In the event the project's never done, they're going to be on their own to struggle with a way to solve the drainage, and so they have a big reason for the city to be working on it. We, Mr. Huddleston, I think we've set aside some funding for the project at this point, or more, programmed it into our capital planning?
That's correct, Mr. Alot. The draft Stormwater Capital Improvements Plan that went before the Water and Sewer Board in the month of May included projected funding for this project, and that also included design, construction, and property acquisition fees, because obviously, at the time, we were working on that plan, we weren't aware of the availability of the donation of any easement. So I assumed there was, would be the purchase of easements and right-of-way in that funding. That capital improvements plan will be presented, or has been presented, I think already in some of the budget information to the mayor and council, and will be considered in the next few days in your regular budgeting process.
The mechanism to get this done is available?
That's right, and we've, staff is supportive of the project, and I think we've got a desire to see it done. Independent of the rezoning, we have a desire to see it done, partly to relieve some of the drainage conditions we know plague the neighborhood, partly to help us address some public drainage that's already contributing to that problem. And then, it's also good planning, we think, because we do believe that something will develop on these properties at some point in the future, and they'll need a good drainage system to be a part of their plan.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question regarding the drainage, since we're kind of getting off on that, and I realize it's not dependent on the zoning, but I've had a lot of people ask me, and so I just want to have someone else tell them besides me. They're concerned that any, all this drainage that we're talking about moving over, and I think ultimately it ends up in Hooper Bottom. And since, I guess I'm over that way, a lot of people have asked about that and concerned that we're taking a problem from one group and giving it to another. And I have told them repeatedly that that is not true. We would not take one problem from one group and just dump it on another to take care of this problem. But I think I'd like someone else that has a whole lot more knowledge about it than me to say that.
Well, I think that you'll find that myself, our Mr. Sam Huddleston, our city engineer, our consultant, Mr. Huddleston, will all tell you the same, and that is that we have no intention, and our project that we're contemplating will not simply shift the problem from one group of property owners to another. We will also tell you that currently, water from this area does overtop and drain into the Hooper Bottom in extreme events. Part of the project will be to relocate the water, detention elements, also to clean the water. Part of the problem with the water that goes into the Hooper Bottom is it's dirty water. You can see it by the trash that we have reports coming in. You can see it sometimes along Siegel Road. Part of our objective will be to put in a regime to clean the water, to remove trash. So we do not intend, nor do we believe, that we would simply move the water from one area to another at the expense of the receiving property.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Huddleston? Beyond the Hooper Bottom on Thompson Lane, in that, another area that water will be able to go under Thompson Lane and into Open Field?
Well, we consider all that part of the Hooper Bottom high-water area. The Hooper family owns a large portion of the area that's, that ponds now in Hooper's Bottom. And we've used, we use that name, we've used it for years, but it actually, for our use of it, it includes all of the areas that are below that certain management elevation that we manage to in Hooper's Bottom. So both sides, north side of Thompson Lane in the curve and south side of Thompson Lane in the Siegel High School, Siegel Road area, all of those are part of what we call the Hooper Bottom high-water area.
Okay, I keep thinking things, sorry, Chairman. And just, the 250 feet for commercial fringe that they're suggesting on here, I take it that is a reasonable amount for commercial fringe developments, that 250 feet is wide enough for something to develop there?
Yes, ma'am, it is, but I'd like to point out that it's possible that it could be part of the same development. And uses that would violate the commercial fringe would not be restricted from that area. So it may be on the same lot of record, but the things that are prohibited by a commercial fringe would not be allowed in that area, like the drive-through windows, the auto repair, the things that we know are nuisance when it's located in close proximity to single-family residences, noise-making.
Could the back of a building that has semi-trucks that back up to it, you know, that could, that could go over into that area, because it would basically be parking lot and the back of a building?
Well, that could happen in the commercial fringe as well. Department of Discount Stores, which would have loading areas, they can be located in the commercial fringe district too. However, that's, those kind of things deserve and merit more buffering than something like a retail parking lot, where the, or a dentist parking lot, where it's a regular daytime office use, where it's automobiles, and a small berm with some landscape on it would probably be a very good buffer. Whereas a loading area, well, it requires more distance. It would require probably a larger type berm to be effective and more landscaping. So I guess to answer your question is, it won't necessarily stop some of the uses from being on the same lots, but it would keep them out of those areas.
Okay. And you're okay with the little jog across there that kind of matches the rear property line as opposed to having a straight line between commercial fringe and commercial highway?
Frankly, it really doesn't matter. It's not a very big jog.
As I say, it's probably so big, I mean, in reality, nobody will ever even notice it. I mean, you know, it's such a large tract, so
We're probably looking at less than 50 foot
Just want to make sure, yeah, okay.
One of the questions I think you should deliberate, if you're leaning in that direction, you may want to consider whether you would like to see it extended into any of the property to the north, the Rogers property or any of that. If you were looking at, contemplating the idea of accepting the applicant's proposed amendment, that if there's going to be a commercial fringe transitional zoning approach, would we do that to the area further to the north? And Ms. Ely, you might see if you can't put one of the maps that shows the blue area and the orange area onto the television.
They're capable of
There you go, and I'm talking about into that blue area to the north.
Just take the 250-foot buffer and extend it straight on that back property line.
Yeah, and I will also point out, they've offered and asked to amend their application to allow the 250-foot instead. You may think that a greater distance may be more appropriate. There's nothing that would prevent you from recommending something different to the city council.
Mr. Alot, though, how can, if these are restricted covenants, how can we go beyond the zoning or requirements on the additional study area?
Zoning's not the restrictive covenant piece of the answer. And commercial fringe is less intensive than commercial highway, so we'll be approving something that is less intensive than what's requested, if that's, isn't that correct?
Right. Mr. Gilly was real quick to answer you correctly.
Yeah, I understand.
First of all, let me, let me offer you this. When it comes to restrictive covenants, don't make that a consideration in your vote, in the sense that we, the city, will have anything to do with enforcement. As a gesture of goodwill on the part of the applicants, I think it's very nice, I think it's very, very worthy of them, but the city will have no role in enforcing that. Restrictive covenants are powerful. I see it every day, and it's not uncommon, if I suspect someone's fixing to try to violate them, I'll let somebody know about it, and it usually shapes things up. But I don't have any real enforcement authority, nor do I, I really won't. But when it comes to the zoning, we do. We'll have a lot of
I'm sorry, I do understand.
Well, I do think that the 250 versus whether it's a different amount or not would go back to whether, you know, again, I have no idea whether 250 is the right amount or not. I would need to take, you know, that suggestion more from you, if you felt 300 feet was more appropriate for that, for a commercial fringe area to be of any benefit, or, you know, and then if you go on up into the blue area, it narrows as you go up there, you know, if you increase that, you're decreasing, you know, you're, it's affecting up there on that end a lot more.
Ms. Jones, I'm going to think about it on a couple of different layers of, Ms. Jones, I'm so sorry. Ms. Jones, I
We've gone a long time without that.
One level is administration. Keep it simple. A straight line, a consistent distance is very easy to administer. Precisely what distance is most appropriate, really that is a question of judgment. I can, I can argue or, well, I can analyze it many different ways. What I want to see is a meaningful strip, a meaningful transition. 250-foot 250-foot is a meaningful transition. I think that Mr. Murphy's remarks that one of the best buffers is distance. If you can keep the type of uses that will be more likely to be of nuisance a little bit further away, then, then that's what buffering should do. One of the things that I think that we're going to be working on over the next couple of years is, and I'm sensing this mood among the council and planning commission, and among the public, that we need to figure out better ways to transition and buffer the uses. When we adopted our ordinance in 1984, we didn't really put much buffer. A five-foot landscape strip was all we made provisions for. In the late 90s, we, in the early 2000s, we adopted our current program with the Type A, Type B, Type C, Type D buffer, that made accommodations for different widths, different thicknesses of plantings, depending upon whether you'd be beside RS-15 and RM-16 or commercial highway and whatever. It may be that we will be going into a time when we look at that again, because it's a very reoccurring thing. And many of the people who participated in the decision at that time, and when we adopted that program, there, we have other people now who weren't part of that discussion. So, it may be that we'll be, we'll be returning to that issue. Whatever we adopt, it will, it will probably come to play on places like this. This is exactly what I call an interface, an interface between residential and another type of land use capability. So, whether or not the 250 is perfect, I think it's appropriate. I think their current buffering program is good, it's basic, it's demonstrated success, but it may be that we need to be looking at those things again. And I, and I think, I think we will be.
What are the wishes of the planning commission on this? Any other questions or comments, clarifications? We've got all our experts here.
Well, I, I think that, you know, I like having the notch areas remain RS-15. I really like the 250-foot commercial fringe, whether exactly 250, but I mean, that certainly is, is fine and seems to be substantial enough. I believe that on Memorial Boulevard, that the commercial highway zoning is an appropriate zoning, or at some point in the future, that is just, just what it's going to be. And so, whether that's now or later is, you know, doesn't really, doesn't really matter. They're requesting it now, the property owners want it now. I would be in favor of the, what we're looking at on this proposed zone, as was presented tonight, this, this group.
The amendment letter.
The amendment letter, as well as the blue areas that, leaving out the one little notched property that's left out on here, leaving out the two hatched areas, and rezoning the remaining blue areas to commercial highway with the 250-foot buffer on the back to commercial And I would make a motion for that.
Second.
Did I cover that?
I think you did. I understand very clearly what you are saying is a 250-foot straight buffer all the way along the back of the blue area, take out the breedings and the ALSA property, leave the notch RS-15, and otherwise adopt the proposed amendment that they made.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Because we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing, a zoning application for RPD amendment for approximately 12.6 acres along Memorial Boulevard, Mr. Ross Bradley, applicant. Ms. Ely, are you?
I'm going to present this.
Okay, Ms. Adalot.
The proposed application is for the property at 3343 Memorial Boulevard. This property was approved as a planned residential development earlier this year, late last year, to allow for the development of a multiple-family development. That development had a program book, and it looked very similar to this. The difference was that after they got into the final designs, they began to look at the roofs again, and the, some of the HVAC units, heating and air, and felt that instead of having them on the ground, and have to screen them around the building, they'd rather put them on the roof, and go to a flat roof, a more urban-looking roof. Accordingly, they have asked for an amendment to their program book. During our work session, we heard from Mr. David Code, who presented to us, he walked through what the changes were. This basically revolved around the roof, and also a change of materials. Instead of hardy plank on some of the exterior walls, looking at a drive-in, it would still be the predominantly masonry buildings, but this program book would be the amended plan as they want it to be. I think there was a letter that was included with your agendas at the last meeting, or actually handed out at the meeting, that went point by point, the pages where the changes were made, but that was the gist of it. As an amendment to the program book, it is basically a rezoning. It requires the planning commission conduct a public hearing, and then to formulate a recommendation to council. I'll be very upfront with you, I don't see a big difference in the plan, and actually, I kind of, in some respects, well, I kind of liked the roof. At first, I felt it was my responsibility to give a lot of pushback to Mr. Code, in part out of jest, as a professional, but then as I looked at aerial, not at aerial photographs, but at photographs, saw the renderings, I think it kind of warmed up to it. It does not detract from the proposed program. You do conduct a public hearing. I think Mr. Ross Bradley is present to answer your questions.
Mr. Bradley, you have, you want to have any comments before we have the public hearing?
I think that's perfect. It's a relatively simple change, we feel like.
All right, we'll open, before we open the public hearing, I would like to ask you to come before, if you want to speak for or against this matter, to come before podium, state your name as these are recorded. Speak approximately three minutes, unless you're representing a group. Any questions that you might have will be answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. And with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone to come forward. Anyone want to speak, for or against? If not, we're going to close the public hearing.
One question.
Ms. Jones.
The buildings, C1 through C4, that I guess are the carport or garage areas?
Yes, ma'am.
They still have the hip roof?
Right, and they're not changing those at all. Those are, of course, shorter buildings, and they are basically in the back.
Yeah, okay. Make sure I'm seeing it all correctly.
Any other questions, comments on this?
Vice Chairman Young, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is the gateway design overlay, Toyota of Murfreesboro, final design and site plan review for 45,955 square foot vehicle dealership on 6.81 acres, Zone CH and GDO1, located along Interstate 24, Bill Smith Drive and Fortress Boulevard, TT and T, Murfreesboro developer. Ely?
Thank you, Chairman Young. Our first item under, and only item under the gateway design overlay district is to review the final design review and the site plan approval for a new vehicle dealership located along Bill Smith Drive, north of Medical Center Parkway Fortress Boulevard, and along Interstate 24. You have had an opportunity, opportunity to review these plans, and the action was deferred at our last meeting on approving the site plan and final design review upon the applicant addressing some comments, one of which was that staff required or wanted a circulation plan for vehicles, and that was submitted to us. And upon reviewing that plan, the, or upon reviewing the circulation plan, one of the driveways did need to be widened so it could accommodate those vehicles, so we're very glad that we've been able to see that information and address that. There are also several other items that the applicant has been able to address. I've got on the screen and rendering of the elevation of the building, and they have revised the elevations as we discussed in our previous meeting. The applicant has also been to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Mr. Halberton attended that, and had, was granted some variances to our requirement for the separation of a building to the adjacent parking or access area. Also, the applicants have been to the water sewer board, and they have approved their request to abandon a portion of the water and sewer easement that runs along Interstate 24, so the plan that we're seeing should be able to work for that. And then, the, it appears that they've been able to address almost all the staff comments. There's one that hasn't been addressed, which is a staff comment, so if you approve this subject, all staff comments, it's something that they'll still need to address. And there's one row of eight parking spaces that doesn't have landscape islands, they should, it should begin and terminate, each row of parking should begin and terminate with a landscape island, and that's not a gateway standard, but it's actually just a general standard for parking lots in Murfreesboro. And due to some of this communication between other staff members and the team, they thought that, that maybe the landscape island shouldn't be installed, but it absolutely should, it's required, and our ordinance requires it. So, there will need to be a small revision to the plans after tonight's meeting, if you do approve it. And of course, I recommend that your approval be a subject to all of our staff comments. Otherwise, it's a fairly good order. I do have the sample board behind Mrs. Jaco, and I don't know if the cameras can get that, but you should have seen these, and they should be familiar to you, they haven't changed. And there are members of the team that are here this evening, and I don't think that they have a presentation prepared, but if they have questions, they're glad to answer them.
Questions for the design team? Mr. Huddleston, you're not going to speak on this?
Mr. Lukens is paid to represent this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're in agreement with adding the two islands, and beyond that, I guess we're basing the project and the elevation, so really, if you have any questions, we can answer.
First, sir, would you introduce yourself to us?
Okay, I'm sorry, Jim Lukens, Lukens Engineering Consultants.
We have picked this plan over, what, four times?
Three.
Should be a whole lot.
I think it's a very, very nice plan.
Strong arm in to putting those landscape, landscape islands in.
I believe we have. I also have examples of the pavers that'll be used in the parking lot, that's why I have in front of me these rosewood blocks, that's my creative way of displaying it. But they do, are using three different colors, and I met with a landscape architect today to help define the areas adjacent to the building, separate from some other areas. And there's a special blend called the Henley blend that was made just for Murfreesboro for the Henley Station, and they're going to incorporate that in their site, so that's a neat concept, helps tie some of the features together. And then they have a red or brick that'll, they'll use to delineate, and then, of course, this gray brick. And these are all permeable pavers, so this is what a paver looks like, and you can see the notches, just in case you're interested, so that there's a space between them, so that water can filter to the storage area beneath them. But these are those, those materials. And this is the only type of material I will accept, not on a material board compliant with our standards.
They won't quite stay on that material board. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions or comments, I do think it's a very nice plan, and then they've worked very hard on it, as has all the staff, appreciate all that hard work, and I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is Plats and Plans. A is Pebble Creek, Section 2, Phase 1, preliminary plat for 15 lots on 4.78 acres, Zone PRD, located along Sandstone Drive and Joshua Shane Drive, Mike Calvin Developer. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our first item under Plats and Plans is to review a preliminary plat for Pebble Creek subdivision, is the Section 2 of Pebble Creek subdivision, located just south of Section 1, and this is adjacent to Bushman Creek, and you can see that on the plans that you have before you. It is owned PRD, Plan Residential District, and the plan appears to comply with that zoning, the program book that was approved for that. This item was deferred at our previous meeting, the May 15 meeting, due to the plan not complying with our minimum lot size requirements, and also for them not complying with our subdivision regulations and street specifications. Unfortunately, Mr. Huddleston appears to have left, but this is his project, so if you have questions, you may have to defer it, but if I can answer your questions, we may be able to take action on it tonight. We did, we have been able to review this, and it appears that they have been able to address those concerns we had about the streets and its design, and its being able to function and provide emergency services when there's a 100-year event. And so, these plans are in much better shape and are ready for you to approve, subject to all staff comments. If you have a question, I'll be glad to answer them. But Mr. Huddleston's done a good job revising this.
Any questions, comments? If not, Vice Chairman, I move for approval, subject to all staff comment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is the Villas of Twin Oaks, master plan and preliminary plat for 34 lots on 14.5 acres, zoned RM along Twin Oak Drive, and served as an outside-of-the-city sewer customer, J, I mean, RCK Joint Venture Developer.
Thank you. Our next plan that we're going to review is a preliminary plat for 34 lots on 14.5 acres that is zoned RM and is relocated in Rutherford County, it's not within Murfreesboro city limits. This site is being served as an outside-of-the-city sewer customer. As such, they are required to submit plans to both Rutherford County and to the City of Murfreesboro and meet our standards, so they are required not only to meet the county's, but the city's standards. This site was tied up in a lawsuit for several years. This plan was initially reviewed by the County Planning Commission several years ago, and I really don't know how many, but it has been several. And finally, there has been a conclusion to that matter, and the, I think courts have, have told Rutherford County that they need to approve the plan. That plan was never submitted to the city, it never got approval from the city, and there's no vested rights in that. So, we've reviewed the plan, and we've asked Jamie Reed, who's the engineer on the plan, to address some comments and look at the site. I believe he's got, are you representing Jamie tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So Doug Jenkins with SEC is representing Jamie. If we have questions, we may need to ask Mr. Jenkins. But this, this plat complies with the lot requirements and with that contract that we have with the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, saying that they have to have a minimum lot size, and that's basically a minimum of 15,000 square feet, and they are able to meet setbacks. The sewer is being extended from the adjacent subdivision, which is Garrison Cove. There were some items which we requested the applicant address, and that was to add some sidewalks within the subdivision, because of course, that's something that we in Murfreesboro require developers to put in for our future residents. We also wanted some improvements to Twin Oak Drive, some turn lanes into the subdivision, and some sidewalks. The applicant met with the planning director to discuss these items, and has requested a variance from those requirements, in that the county, Rutherford County Road Board, he said, does not want those improvements to Twin Oak Drive. Twin Oak Drive is not a city street, it is still in the county, so if it is Rutherford County's preference, the road to not have that turn lane, it would be staff's recommendation that we not require that, because it's not our street. And then also dealing with the sidewalks. So, what we've tasked Mr. Reed with is contacting both the county road board and the county planning director, getting letters from them stating that these changes are not something they want, and if that is what happens, then we recommend that this plan is approved without those improvements, which are identified on staff comments. Of course, if the county wants those improvements, then we would recommend that the decision you make be that they be installed. But we are comfortable deferring to the county, since this is the county subdivision, and these are county roads and not city streets. If that's their judgment, then we would recommend that that's what we go with. So, any approval that you have, you may want to make for this preliminary plat, we would ask that you make it subject to the county approving the changes, either requiring them or not requiring them. And I know Ms. Adalot had the conversation, I wasn't involved in that, so if you had more to add about it.
You've done a very good job of laying it out and explaining it.
I do have one question, Ms. Ely. I understand the county not wanting the sidewalks on Twin Oak Drive, but what about the sidewalks inside the subdivision itself?
That was a comment that we asked for, and... That was a comment that we asked for, and the same response to that was that they didn't want the sidewalk to think another complication may be that county was told to approve this plan as submitted by the courts. And so, they think that maybe changing those plans might throw a wrench in something. And so, we certainly don't want to interfere with any decisions made by courts.
I probably don't want to maintain sidewalks.
We would ask that the developers provide to us the written request, so we have it documented, and justification to verify the situation that they find themselves in. And if that's the case, we understand. There's no reason for the city to be particularly difficult on the matter, and we don't intend to be.
Can I get one clarification? We're looking at this as a master plan and a preliminary plat for 34 lots. So are we just looking at one section? And if so, which section?
Yeah. It's the master plan for the whole subdivision, and it's the preliminary plat for only 34 lots. There are more lots to be reviewed. And the initial plans were not, and the initial plans are what you have on your iPad. They were not clear on what is Section 1 and what's Section 2. And that was actually Mr. Huddleston's comment, was identify what's going to be Section 1, Section 2. So the paper copies, which are a little bit, which are newer, they came after I published your agenda, should have that more clearly identified.
So our agenda does, you didn't know at the time the agenda was done which section was the 34 lots? So is it Section 1?
It should be. Mr. Jenkins?
Okay.
Yeah, it was unclear.
Hi, I'm Doug Jenkins from SEC Engineering. But yes, this would be Section 1, which is the 34 lots.
So looking at the whole master plan for the whole subdivision, and then Section 1 for a preliminary plat with the 34 lots in Section 1. Okay.
So they would have to submit a preliminary plat for the next sections, but not anything for the master plan unless they want to revise the master plan.
Okay. I think based on the, you know, basically what we have to deal with here, I mean, the master plan itself looks good, as far as I would think, the streets and the way the lots are laid out and everything, and the preliminary plat for Section 1, I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments specifically, including the ones, you know, regarding the items that were needed from the county for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is Window of the World Site Plan for 4,950 square feet, wholesale retail store on .052 acres, zoned LI, located along South Point Court, Window World of Middle Tennessee, the developer. Ms. Ely?
Thank you. This first site plan we'll be reviewing under the Platts and Plans portion of our meeting is for Window World, which is an item that was also deferred at our May 15 meeting. And it was deferred, or I think this item, I think when I say deferred, actually, the applicants withdrew them temporarily to improve their plans that were not in good shape. So they've come back to you with the revised plan. This is for property that's along South Point Court, and it also is adjacent to Interstate 24. This is a site plan review for a new 4,950-square-foot retail store, which will be selling windows and those types of accessories, located on Lot 37 within the South Point Business Campus, that's located between South Point Court and Interstate 24. The property is zoned LI Light Industrial District, and the proposed use is permitted within the LI District. It was withdrawn due to concerns we had about circulation. And one of the major concerns we had was that the previous plan was showing a dock, a dock that was not accessible by trucks to deliver. So we thought that that was something that needed to be addressed, because if you're going to, if that's a part of your business, we want it to work. And so, staff, and particularly Mr. Balachandra, worked with the engineer to give us some simulations and associated data to show us how the property would be served. It demonstrated that it couldn't be, the dock could not be served. So the engineer, Mr. Huddleston, met with the client, talked to him about that. And so, the plan you have now removes the dock. Client said he didn't really need it and want it. So that aspect has been taken off of the plan. Still requires, the site still requires a delivery vehicle to circle around South Point Court and back into the site, but it's less stop-and-goes than it was before. So the access, or their ability to get in there is improved, much enhanced from what you saw before. Also, the width of the driveway has, or the width of the drive aisle has been reduced, and the building has been shifted towards South Point Court a little bit more to provide for that required landscaping yard located along the rear property line, which is that property line with Interstate 24. The landscaping plan for this still needs to have a little bit of work. We met with Mr. Kane Adams with the Urban Environmental Department this afternoon, and his comments are minor, but there still are some. So that's really the outstanding issue, would be to revise some of that landscaping. But I think that that's something that we certainly can do if you decide to approve this subject to all staff comments. I have a photograph of a Window World that is in another location. They haven't designed, an architect designed, anything specific to this site, but you can see they use different materials on it as sort of an advertisement. I'll go ahead and hand this to Mr. Halliburton. If you want to take a look at the building, we, of course, would require them to screen any rooftop equipment and address both rights of way when they do submit those architectural plans. Otherwise, the plan seems to be in fairly good order, and if you have, it would be staff's recommendation that your approval would be subject to all staff comments.
Ms. Ely, initially, there were some problems with this site plan, and I assume after listening to what you said, you've worked out the great majority of them.
Yes, sir, especially the ones that concerned us.
And everything else can be done administratively?
It can. Prior to them receiving any permits, we'll make sure the landscaping is addressed.
How do you, was the problem corrected to keep the truck from backing up and back and up and back in the cul-de-sac? Move the driveway some?
The drive, well, I'm not sure, because...
How do you fix that?
Frankly, they decided to circle the cul-de-sac properly, but they demonstrated the proper way to circulate on the cul-de-sac. For some reason, the previous designs had the poor truck driver having to go about everything backwards, causing him to take three movements in the cul-de-sac. Once they calibrated the way a truck driver should drive, using the rules of the road by being on the right side of the road, they found out that they could just back, they just turned the cul-de-sac and then back right into the side.
So they go counterclockwise as opposed to clockwise?
Once the problem was identified, it was an easy solution. It was a missing use of the program that shows how to do it.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I got one question. We're saying that the docks were eliminated, but the site plan shows two docks.
The paper site plan that you have does not. When I published the agenda, it's before they revised their plans. So what goes on your PDFs is the first and middle. It goes along with the staff comments that you initially received. So they did not give me, I didn't get revised PDFs before.
So the 10-foot doors will not have docks?
Right.
They'll be at parking lots, gray.
I'm with you.
The dock that was removed was actually four feet, had a four-foot dock outside the door, so a truck could back into it. That's middle.
But they'll still be able to back to the door and maneuver?
Forklift, fork trucks, pilot jacks, those sorts of things, taking material out of the trucks and into warehouses.
That will work. What they're doing will, they can do what they want to do without a dock.
Yeah, the owner said he could, and that's how they operate now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our next item, Kroger Site Plan for 42,199 square-foot addition to the existing grocery store, and the addition of two fuel pumps to the existing fuel center on 11.9 acres on Commercial Highway at 2946 South Church Street, Kroger Limited Partnership Development.
Yes, sir. That's me, your faithful site plan reviewer. Our next item and final site plan review item is for the expansion of Kroger located along South Church Street. The expansion will almost double the size of the Kroger. The planned expansion is 42,199 square feet, and that's in addition to what currently exists. You did review the site plan for the fuel pumps. They will be adding a couple of fuel pumps and expanding the canopy, I believe, for those fuel pumps, and that was approved a couple months ago. The site plan portion of this was not reviewed and approved by you, because we were waiting on some additional information from the applicant for them to do a traffic analysis. And that traffic analysis has been done and turned into staff, and we'll go through those changes in just a moment. I do have, I'll ask, would you mind putting the Kroger sample board on the easel? They have provided us with the building elevations for the Kroger as it is proposed to be expanded, and I have those on the screen now. And you can see that it is a masonry building, entirely masonry building, and they've added some interest to the roofline. They provided us with the material samples, and those are on the easel now. And they are consistent with the area, and I think they look good, and this expansion will look good when it's developed, as has been shown to us, with the entrance being accented with some stone features, and you can see those. The site plan has been, they've been able to address our comments on the site plan. I think there's just a few very small comments. And so, if you do approve the plan, I would recommend that you make it subject to all staff comments. But one of the points that are something I wanted to point out to you is that this, the intersection of Enzbrook Boulevard and South Church Street, which is what folks use to exit the Kroger, because it has a signalized intersection, rather than trying to cross all lanes of the highway, they'll use that signalized intersection. It showed that there will be an increase in traffic, and so we wanted to see how that could be managed, and actually, how it can be improved, because there is a subdivision that uses that street as well. And as a matter of fact, there's, Mr. Gilly lives there, so he's familiar with it, but there's landscape islands on Enzbrook Boulevard, and there's a sign in Enzbrook Boulevard. And across the street is the new driveway for the Goodwill store, but there's also a couple out parcels that will be developed in the future. We fully expect one of them to be, expect one of them to be a restaurant. So that drive has attempted to line up with this drive, so they have a positive connection point. And then, so the traffic analysis said, well, remove the landscape island and have more lanes so that you can turn. And staff looked at this and thought, well, you know, we know how important this landscape island is to the people who in the subdivision, in Enzbrook subdivision. So we asked the engineering team to, and the design team, to go back and look at what they could do. So they looked at a couple things. They looked at either expanding the street on the furthest side, which is the southernmost side, where they have, on each side, they have some round signs as well. They looked at reducing the size of the landscape island, because we said removing it really is not the best option, and we wouldn't want to do that. And so, we found out that expanding the lane to the side, to the outermost lane, really wasn't the best option. And I'll have representative of engineering team speak to you about why that didn't work, but essentially, there are utilities there, there's another sign there, and then the relocation of the sidewalk would cause it to run right into the back of that sign. And some of that work may require easements on private property. However, if they can make modifications to the center landscape island, it's working the right of way. They don't need to acquire any additional easements or anything like that. But they're going to put everything back as you see it. So the sign will need to be taken down. They're going to put it right back up, but they're going to have to move the location over a couple feet, put the landscaping back, the decorative lighting, all that will go back. It's just the width of the landscape island will be reduced, thereby giving an extra lane for traffic to turn. And Mr. Balachandra has reviewed this extensively, and I know had conversations with the design team. And actually, another benefit of making modifications to the landscape island would be that the lanes can line up appropriately, because if you made a modification to the south, there would be kind of an odd jog. And also, there's the signal operation. Mr. Balachandra looked at how the signals operate, and I don't know all those details, but I know there's, you know, he wants left to go at the same time and not wait for one left to go, and then you have to wait for the other left to go. So operationally, it would be best with this design. We know that any change sometimes is viewed with some skepticism. So we would like to maybe reach out to the homeowners association, let them know what's going on, let them know that this will improve the situation out there as it is now, but also knowing that the store size is going to double, and any additional park, or traffic that's going to be generated out there, it will improve that as well, and that there will be a change, but their sign will remain. And we don't currently allow signs in the right of way anymore, but they have a vested right in that. And moving it over a couple feet is not going to remove that, and it's going to allow the sign to remain there, because they were approved by Planning Commission in the early 90s. I think it was like 96. So the sign, it was a lawfully established, non-conforming structure. But I think I've talked quite a bit. I'll go ahead and let the design team talk about the site plan. If you have any questions, of course, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Balachandra will be glad to answer them. I know he knows this intimately as well. I guess all of staff will, we're all be glad to answer them, but I would like to, I guess, help you if I can. But would you like to add anything about the store or the...
My name's Randy Harper with Perry Engineering, here representing Kroger. I also have a gentleman from Kroger here tonight as well, Mr. Jim Gavigan. We've looked at this issue with the sign and the median there on Enzbrook pretty extensively, and Ram and I have talked about it several times. We'd looked at widening again to the south, as Morgan had said. And I've put together kind of a photograph, kind of laid out kind of where that lane would be and how it would impact the existing sign. But on each side of the Enzbrook intersection there, there are two stone walls that kind of wrap around. Those walls actually project into the right of way, so it effectively narrows down the width of the right of way there. When we widen, if we just widen to the south and leave the center median alone, the lane would be over top of the existing sidewalk. If we put the sidewalk back in, we can't get it through. It comes in on the backside of that stone wall. So we would either have to shorten the stone wall, take the stone wall out, and change that part of it. The sidewalk would be right on the edge of the right of way. There's also some underground electric power there, some other underground utilities there that we would need to be relocating. Where the sidewalk would intersect with the sign, there's a grade, a change in grade there as well, where we would, if we just extended the road slopes out, we would be below actually the bottom of that sign. We would expose the foundation of it. So we would actually have to cut it back a little bit more in order to fit that lane and sidewalk through. So what we've proposed is to do the widening in the middle, moving the island over, moving the sign over. Just keep the same size, same sign, put it back exactly as it is, and just narrow the width of the median there. And if you will, I'd like to just pass out a couple of these. Kind of, I always say a picture's worth a thousand words. So I've got a picture here that kind of shows where the lanes would be, where the sidewalk would be, and you kind of see where the sign is if we had to widen to the south. Kind of see there, there's a couple sets of red lines that show on either side of the sidewalk, we would maintain the white stripe on the existing road. You kind of see a couple feet off, right behind the back of the sidewalk would be where the edge of the curb and gutter would be, and you'd have a sidewalk behind it. Kind of the big bush there that you see directly in front of that sidewalk width, that's where the column is on the wall sign on the south side. So that particular issue, when you actually move the sidewalk over the property line, it really gets into the trees there on the bank side, and we wouldn't want to damage those as well, because they're fairly mature trees. So that's kind of why we'd like to do the widening in the center, move the sign over, and we'll replace the landscaping in kind. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. If anybody else has anything.
I would like to point out, this work is being done by Kroger, and so, these improvements, that will benefit not just the patrons of Kroger, but people in the subdivisions and shopping around there. The money being spent isn't by the city, but these improvements are being done by the developer, which is Kroger.
Yeah. One of the things that you'll see too is, as the Goodwill develops across the street, we're adding, Goodwill's adding a fourth leg to that traffic signal. When they add that fourth leg, it's going to actually cause further delay to the people coming out of the Enzbrook subdivision. When we add this extra additional left turn lane, it actually reduces the delay. After Kroger's said and done, it actually... After Kroger's said and done, it actually reduces the delay back to about what it was, or a little bit less than what it was before the left lanes added. So it actually makes a big improvement to the function of the intersection.
And I think that's good, because, you know, like Margaret Ann said, I live out there in that area, and I... Because of the stacking normally on this street, I will normally use the apron to Kroger and just wait to cross all those lanes of traffic to go back north, as opposed to going down to the light, rather than waiting in the stacking line. I would rather wait there than I would just sit through four changes of the same signal. The other question, the space for the building, what's going out? Because there's stuff on both sides of the Kroger that's out there now, so for the expansion of the building itself, is what I'm trying to get a grasp on, what's going away or how...
What we're doing is actually taking out about fifteen to fifteen, sixteen thousand square feet of the existing shops. There'll be about three shops left on the end, and we're widening all the way back so that it squares up the back with the back of the Kroger.
Okay. So it's your satellite partner, you're leasing out to right now that you're just...
Yes, sir. There'll actually be a couple more tenants there that will eventually have leases.
Okay. Good.
Are you on both sides, or is it just one side?
No, it's just on one side.
Just one side, that being north side, right?
Right now, that's correct. Right now, Kroger goes all the way over to the Enzbrook side, that's where the pharmacy drive-through is. All the widening is going to be to the north side.
To the north side.
Yes, sir.
How far in the back, in the rear end?
It goes all the way back to the back wall of the existing Kroger.
You're not getting rid of my Jersey mics, are you?
They're relocating to one of the side places. I've already asked.
Okay. Good. Sorry.
They will be relocating, but they still be up there.
Okay. Good.
Well, this is a significant development in our community. Glad to see it happen. Ms. Ely, is there anything else we need to work on with this?
Subject to all staff comments. I think it's in good shape. They've also received some mandatory approval... Mandatory referral approval from the Planning Commission and City Council to abandon some portion of the water and sewer easement located in the rear of the building where the expansion is going. So what they'll be required to do is to build the new, get that operational, then they can take out the old. But that's already been done, so they're... I think they're ready to move forward.
Seeing none, I recommend approval subject to all staff comment.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is staff reports and other business. Ms. A. Lot?
It'll be me. Yes, sir. Under this segment of the agenda, I want to talk to the Planning Commission a little bit about the amendments to the zone ordinance into the zone map regarding the GDO district. And first of all, I want to start talking about the mixed-use district. Well, actually, first of all, I want to put things in perspective. The city adopted the current GDO regulations in late 2003, early 2004. So believe it or not, we're approaching our 10-year anniversary on the Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations. It's been a... Something that we've had some experience with now. We've seen the gateway begin to grow. I will not say it's mature yet, but it is growing, and we have seen a lot of developments. And we've learned a lot about the process. The planning staff has learned how to talk with property owners about the process, how to deal with the design teams, and we've learned how to move people through the process, what they expect out of it, what they fear about it, what you expect a little bit out of it, and where the hang-up seem to be. So that's one of the things that has been on my mind lately about the gateway. Also, the land out there. Some of the land has been properly zoned from the get-go, some of it has not been. A big part of the property out there is zoned Office General, in the gateway, west of Thompson Lane, north of the Medical Center Parkway. Office General is a good buffer zone at the right places, but for the type of vision that we have begun to see for the gateway, I don't believe, as the City's Plan Director, as a practicing planner, that it promotes the type of development that we really want to see in that area. Certainly with the opportunities that the property presents in terms of location, in terms of the inertia that area has, Office General is going to be a zoning district that holds that area back, especially recognizing that we have a design review process that every development goes through, that we look at it carefully. With regards to the land that the city owns, which is predominantly in the GDO number three district, the greatest part of that area is zoned light industrial. It was zoned industrial in the county before it was annexed. We've kept it... One of the things that has kept it from going in a bad direction in terms of industrial has been these, the GDO regulations and the restrictive covenants that the city placed on the land as the land developer. Lots of times, we neglect the role that the city played on that property, but the city placed restrictive covenants on much of the land around the hospital, east of Thompson Lane, along the Medical Center Parkway. And those restrictions with a design review committee, in addition to the gateway design regulations, have served to really move that property into a very positive direction. Pause and reflect for a moment, the industrial, light industrial buildings we were seeing on the Thompson Lane that first were constructed. Not wanting to say bad of them, but there was no movement by the city to push them into a higher quality. And once we began to see what was happening, we saw a need to do that. And I think we will all reflect for a moment and say that the original buildings constructed out there are nowhere near as appealing as the ones that have come later during the design process. And because we got the process going, property owners expect to raise the bar. So one of the things that I have had on my mind has been a new zoning district. I've made a report to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago about the idea of working on one. I have worked on something and want to present tonight that's called the Mixed Use District. One of the things about the Office General and about the Light Industrial Zone is that neither one allows for residential uses of any kind. We are seeing a need, and in other areas where we see gateway-type districts in other communities, a need for a mixture of uses. The residential adds another dimension to it, and not all land can be or should be developed commercially in an area like that. So the Mixed Use District is designed to allow for a variety of types of uses. The materials I handed out to you is a draft of a proposed amendments. They include making provisions for landscaping, making provisions for buffering, making provisions for setbacks. We're looking at a urbanistic type of a development pattern when the property does not front directly upon the Medical Center Parkway. If it fronts directly upon the Medical Center Parkway, we're requiring some additional setbacks to give it the type of feel that we want to see on that road. If you've had a chance to read those regulations, you'll see that it is different than any other zoning district that the city has. It allows for residential, but it does not allow for single-family residential. It requires nine acres or a multifamily site, and that's calibrated to allow a complex with a... I guess you might say, number of units to create a management regime that the property will be managed well. We don't want to... I don't like to see small apartment complexes, because management is often a problem in them. So the nine acres almost assures that there'll be enough units and enough quality to see a good management. It also allows a density at twenty-five units per acre, if they want to go that direction, that they could have parking structures. We have seen some people who came in to test the waters for some multi-story, multifamily buildings with parking structures, and they were very desirable. One of them that we've seen that we all, I think, like is the Gateway Village that the Swansons have done, immediately adjacent to the hospital. That type of development could be done under the MU district that we're proposing, both the commercial and residential combined with that type of density that he has in that building, without going through the planning development process, but by going through the GDO design review process. The Mixed Use District would allow for additional setback requirements for additional height. When you go up to the taller buildings, you'd want to have some additional heights. Since the time I made this draft, I have paused to reflect. It may be for multifamily, that some of the heights may need to be adjusted downward, and I'm going to be taking a look at that before we go to a public hearing. But at this point, for presentation to you and to the community, this is where I'm standing with the idea that we'll be looking at those numbers again. So I'm excited about the prospect of creating this Mixed Use District. I'm not going to read the entire district. I hope you've had a chance to read it. It was with your agenda materials. Now, I want to talk a moment about the places where it would be applicable. Basically, the area that we'd be looking at would be the area south of Wilkerson Pike, north of Medical Center Parkway. It would also include the area along Robert Rose, south of Medical Center Parkway. It would include the land that the city owns that's not already developed, and it would include some land that the city owns that would be... That's the current demolition landfill adjacent to Stones River, that we'd like to be able to see develop in a beneficial use someday. It's a demolition landfill, but part of the site has development capability. I believe in the agenda materials, I showed you a draft, really hoping to be a concept map, with the expectation that as we went through a visioning process with the community and gained more input, we'd probably return and redraw those boundaries. At this point, before I go into the regulations about the GDO, are there any questions about the MU district that I'm proposing?
I like where you're going. Thanks, Greg.
We've had the other one for 10 years, and we've found some minor flaws in it, and we're making some good corrections.
All right. Now I want to talk a little bit about the Gateway Design Overlay District. I laughed for a moment, because I know, I challenged you with this. This is the section that our zone ordinance that deals with the GDO district, and I have taken it out for a while, and I have worked on it, and I have tracked all the changes that would go with it, so that all the changes that we're looking to make are in red. There's about sixty-five pages here, but when you really take out all the edits and the repetitions because of the edits, it gets it down to about fifty pages. Still, it's a lot of text. But what you'll find here is that the greatest part of it is relatively minor, and it begins to incorporate some of our practices. First of all, one of the things we do are looking at changing the submittal requirements for initial design review, master plans, and final design review. In the requirements for changing, we are given much clearer, much better laid-out checklist of what's expected of applicants. Now, I'm going to be very, very frank with you. I believe that I've probably included a little bit too much required for the initial design review, and before we adopt it, we're going to probably back out some of that stuff, because it's a little bit more. But what we've been finding is that the applicants come to the initial design review ready. They want to move. And the ones that are prepared, when it comes to final design, it's just a cakewalk. It's just so easy for them. It's the guys that are confused, that gets mixed up, or just to have a little bit difficult communicating, that have problems at final design review. The people that are prepared, it's a cakewalk. And I want to look at... I think that's a good practice. The applicants seem to want it, the engineers that we deal with seem to want it, and it seems to work good. If we can just almost have that as a consent agenda item for a final design, everybody seems to be very happy. So we're wanting to give very clear checklist, and that's not going to only help the people that you see. One of the things that you may need to reflect on when we do these kind of regulations, that there is a part of the team that we never see, and that's the poor guy that actually does the work for the engineer. He's the technician. He's the young guy that he has to do the work, whereas his seniors get to come to the meetings and talk and present and all that. But there's somebody back at the office who's doing the work, and somebody's having to communicate to him. Well, I want to make the regulations clear to that guy, because if I don't get to him and I don't communicate to him very well, he is confused, and his confusion will cause his plan to maybe have problems. So I want to help the process by getting to the guy that's doing the work somewhere that we don't see very well. So a good, clear checklist will help him a whole lot, because it's going to become a much clearer recipe of what he's supposed to do. Another thing we're doing is with the pre-design conference, and I really want to tell you that I believe that these pre-design conferences have been an overwhelming success. When we, the staff, can sit down with an applicant, and we do, and discuss with them your expectations, our expectations, their expectations, communicate about what they're going to be doing, how it's going to proceed, it helps them immensely. In fact, I want to expand that eventually to all site plans that are of a certain size. We already are doing it with subdivision plats, and once in a while, we have someone who forgets, but those who go through that pre-design conference, it benefits everybody, because we understand, they understand, and it moves the process much quicker and easier for them. So we're trying to make it... Give an agenda for those meetings that will be included in what they're seeing. So when they come to the meeting, pre-designed, they know what we're going to talk about, and they know how it's going to proceed. It's not a mystery. In your professional lives, you all know one of the... Probably the frustrating things is when you have a meeting, but you don't know what's going to be done, what's going to be accomplished, what you're expected to do, or how you need to be prepared. But when you do know what's expected of you, and you know what's going to be discussed, and you know how to be prepared, those meetings are very productive, and that's what we're trying to set these initial design and pre-design conferences up for. Beyond that, most of the other changes are just relatively... Well, not even cosmetic, they're editorial, they are really not substantive, they're relatively minor. Now, one of the things that goes hand in hand with the regulations is the areas that are zoned. One of the things, and this actually would be in the Mixed Use District that I want to see done, I believe should be done, and I really want you to consider with me, and that is the elimination of the BP Overlay District. The BP Overlay District pre-existed the GDO. Before we had the GDO, we had the BP. It was not about design review, it was about limiting certain land uses. It was not about a buffer, and one of the things was to provide a height that would be the same as the property was before the property was annexed, which the county zoning allowed thirty-five-foot height. So that was really what it did. It prohibited some uses, and it's established a maximum height. And beyond that, it really didn't do much. It did not do any kind of design review. It wasn't about brick, it wasn't about metal-sized buildings, it wasn't about the arrangement of structures. It was about a maximum of thirty-five-foot height and about limiting certain uses from being permitted. No tents, no itinerant vendors, no stockyards, that sort of thing. When we created the GDO regulations, we duplicated those regulations into the GDO. And basically, the staff had the idea that we would eliminate the BP. Well, somehow we didn't. And it has been a source of confusion for a lot of the people that we do business with. In a pre-design conference where we meet with people, and we schedule an hour, and we end up talking ten minutes about the dead gum BP Overlay District because they're confused about it, we've lost a big part of our hour on an issue that is a non-issue. So it even has effects that you all never see. And I know I've said in public hearings where there seems to be very strong ownership of that, but it is misplaced. The real protection is the GDO regulations, the design review process. So that's one issue that I think that I really want to appeal to you all to consider, because I want to make that as a recommendation as part of the MU regulation, because the GDO is where the protection is, the BP is not. One thing that I'm also going to recommend is that we change some of the GDO districts. A couple of examples. The Oaks Shopping Center is in GDO three. Well, the GDO three, we're going to include additional uses, or actually, we're going to exclude additional uses from it, because the GDO three is becoming more of a premier office type of development use. It's not a retail environment. And I'm going to recommend that we put the Oaks Shopping Center, take it out of GDO three, and put it in GDO one, because that's where it should be. After all, it fronts on Thompson Lane. I'm going to recommend that a big part of Thompson Lane, in the area where we have rezoned properties for the purpose of getting additional height, which would include the Hampton Inn, the Candlewood Suites, the Parkway Plaza, the Swanson structures, the Gateway Village, I'm going to recommend that that part of Thompson Lane, the south end of it, be changed to GDO one, because that's... of it, be changed to GDO one, because that's really the only difference that there is in that area, the height. And we've already let those through, either by variances or by going through the zoning process. Another area that I look at is the area that is along Wilkinson Pike. There's a 500-foot strip of GDO two, which is more limiting, but reduce that down to 250-foot instead of 500-foot, at the same time keeping the same protections. And then the third area, an area along Medical Center Parkway where the demolition landfill is beside the river, make it GDO one also instead of GDO three. So there may be some additional tweaks, but these are three areas or four areas I've identified that really, as I look at it, we really need to go back and adjust our map because they're misplaced. They're misplaced when we look at how the regulations have been applied and our experiences with those areas over the last 10 years. So that's a rundown of what I'm proposing. What I wanted some discussion from you is, is this the right thing to do? Have I got buy-in from you to proceed with this? Because if I do have buy-in to proceed with this, I want to have a neighborhood meeting. I want to get some public, look at this. I want to get posted on the internet, and I want people to begin to see this and then have a chance to review it and give us some input back, as we've had, as we did with the CM district a couple of years ago and the OG district around the old hospital site, because I think this is something that the council wants, this kind of public participation. If I'm going in the wrong direction, please snatch me back from the abyss. Abyss, I don't want to go over it. But if I'm going in the right way, give me a pat on the back, and staff knows what to do. So what are your thoughts about what I presented to you?
Taylor, I think it sounds good that you made the comment. I know on my tenure of being on this planning commission and some dealings with the Wilkinson Pike area, you mentioned you might be changing that, but the requirements would be the same. I didn't quite follow that. You said that you would change the GDO territory, but the requirements would stay the same with respects to Wilkinson Pike.
Well, in terms of the gateway design review, it would. The southern half, the front part, the 250-foot, 35-foot height would remain the same. The southern half, the remaining 250-foot, that 500-foot strip, would go to the same as GDO one.
Okay.
I think you're on the right track. That's good.
I agree. I think you're on the right track, because as we continue to make changes in our community, we have to make changes to zoning amendments to stay up to par. So I think we're on the right track.
So it's a refinement of the original process?
Yes, it is.
So we're fine?
Improving on it.
It's taking stock of where we've been and see where we need to go.
I think the mixed-use district is going to enhance the opportunities for more of a variety of development, with stores at the bottom and houses on the top. So I think that's what we all want to go to, especially in the downtown area. And Tom said, this is an improvement. Looking back over 10 years where we've been and where we want to go and what improvements we can make.
Well, I'm very encouraged by the planning commission's comments, as short though they are, I know a pat on the back when I feel one.
Sincere, much better.
My course of action now is to step back and refine these a little bit more, because just before I left for vacation a couple of weeks ago, I was still receiving some comments from other staff members. The city manager's office is already involved. They've been part of this discussion. I've got a couple more comments, but they're minor to incorporate. Then I'm going to begin what I call a little bit of a public relations, public outreach process where we will get things on the internet, where we will advertise, maybe even get some signs up, because I think everybody that owns property out there has a stake. So we'll try to get, we'll have a meeting with the, an open house type meeting, and then we'll report back to the planning commission. It's going to be a couple of months, but at that point, when we report back, we'll be about ready to move it into an ordinance format so that we can have a planning commission public hearing to formulate a recommendation. And that's the course of action that I expect to take from here.
Thank you.
Can conclude your business?
Well, yes, it does. We do have one more report, and that would be from you, Mr. Young. I understand that you have a report on roundabouts that you need to make.
Due to the late hour, I will address the roundabouts at another time, but I have experienced many roundabouts and have done a detailed study of roundabouts, and I'm still going roundabout it. Are we finished for today?
We're three.
Any other comments? If not, we're adjourned.